One minute, one minute.
Calling the meeting in order, Madam Chair, call the roll please.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Here.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Before we get started, Council, I'd like to add an item L, a resolution declaring a local And we'll now have our invocation by Vice Mayor Jay Lee Vogler Jr. Please stand and the pledge of allegiance.
Gracious and loving God, we first come to you thankful, thankful that while we experienced flooding in our region, it wasn't nearly as bad as if one time looked it could have been. We also ask that you spare those who were uprooted and dislocated from further harm, help those in the storm's way to return to safety, stability, and security. Open our hearts and generosity to all who have no resources, whether physical, spiritual, or economic, in all things and at all times. Help us to remember that when the storms of life come upon us, you are always with us, leading us to shelter, guiding us to safety, comforting us in our need. Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we want to say good evening to everyone and those of you who are here at the chamber, welcome. I now yield to our city manager for our special guest.
Our superintendent for Danville Public Schools, he has a special guest he would like to introduce.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's always a pleasure to appear before you. I just want to take a few minutes of your time this evening to introduce Dr. Tanya Steele. Dr. Steele has been selected as the new principal of Woodrow Wilson Intermediate School, effect of Acts 28th. She replaces Dr. JoBeth Clark, who's been acting as the interim principal there since June of 2018. And she wasn't expecting this, but I wanted to make a few remarks about her. Dr. Steele is a highly skilled administrator, educator, and executive communicator with strong content knowledge in urban elementary education. She's an experienced trainer with an extensive background in administration, coupled with skills in instructional strategies, coaching, data analysis and assessment, observation, staff development, assessment development, and supervision of educational professionals. She received her Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from Middle Tennessee State University in 1990. Excuse me?
You have to say the year.
Oh, I had to say the year. A Master in Arts degree from Central Michigan University, I will not say the year, a Specialist in Education from Kennesaw State University, and a Doctor of Education from Kennesaw State University. She comes to us from Atlanta Public Schools, where she most recently has been serving as international baccalaureate specialist. She's taught kindergarten and grades one, three, and five in Metropolitan Nashville Schools, Fulton County Schools, and in the Atlanta Public Schools. She was also a model teacher, leader, and elementary school principal for Atlanta Public Schools, and worked in instructional support for Marietta City Schools, and I can go on and on and out about her. But let me just say this, she literally hit the ground running. I think I talked to her on one day when she was in Atlanta, she was here the next day at work, still trying to find a place to live. So despite the negative weather we dealt with, I think it did give her an opportunity to get settled in a little bit more. But we're very pleased that she has chosen to join us, and if you would join me in welcoming her to our wonderful city.
Dr. Steele, welcome. You want some comments? Councilman Shanks, please.
I'm excited to hear that you're going to be up at that school. That school has tremendous history, and when it closed, it still was a very beautiful, successful school. Also, I'm interested in hearing more about your IB. My wife is an IB coordinator for Galileo, so I'm sure we have some conversations to be had.
Yes, my daughter graduated IB degree as well.
Good, great. Really excited about you being here in Danville. Thank you and good luck.
Councilman Campbell.
Yes, I wanted to detail what he said and come behind it. I agree with everything the Fris said. In addition to that, Woodrow's community really support that school well. The parents, the churches there, they engage well, and we're just glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Dr. Jones, thank you so much for being here. And Dr. Steele, I just want to share something with you. If you see a young man walking through the school, I'm cutting my eyes over here to the right to Councilman Buckner. But Councilman Buckner went to Woodrow, and he showed me all kinds of hideouts and everything that he used to hang out. So if you see him hanging over there, that's what he's doing. But again, welcome too, man. Thank you so much, Dr. Jones. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Got a special recognition for the Garden Club with Ms. Bonnie Griffin, the president. Please come forward, please. And we welcome you and all the members of the Garden Club if you'd like to come forward for this recognition, please. Again, welcome, everyone. Kind of scared me a little bit. Mayor Saunders didn't prepare me for that. Whereas the Garden Club of Danville was established in 1918 to spark interest in gardens for their beauty, and whereas the Garden Club of Danville's mission is and always has been to inspire women to create lovely green spaces throughout the city, as well as cultivate friendships through the love of flowers, and whereas the Garden Club of Danville is an active organization with four ongoing projects in the city of Danville, which include plannings at the Danville Science Center, the Parkinson Perkins Rose Garden, and the grounds of the Danville Museum of Fine Arts and History, and the Grove Street Cemetery. And whereas the Garden Club has also been active in state and local events, including assisting the city with the Rose Festival, held in honor of Lady Astor on the occasion of her visit to her native city in 1922, when 1,000 rose bushes bearing her name were given to the schoolchildren appearing at a hearing advocating ecological projects to include removal of outdoor advertising signs along Virginia's highways, promoting enrollment in curbside recycling, providing education on uranium mining, and supporting the general health of the Dan River and its geological area. And whereas the Garden Club of Danville will continue to celebrate the beauty of the land to conserve the gifts of nature and to change future generations to build it on this heritage. Now therefore, I, Alonzo Jones, Mayor of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby recognize the Garden Club of Danville's centennial anniversary and sincerely appreciate gratitude to this organization for their contributions to Danville community and the Commonwealth of Virginia, given under my hand this 18th day of September 2018. Congratulations and thank you all so much. You want to have some comments, please. Go to the mic so they can hear you, so that our audience can hear you.
I just want to thank you and the city for giving us this certificate of recognition. And just a note, none of us were in that 1918 group.
Thank you all so much again. Constitution Week. Will Representative Ms. Ann Guyer, please come forward? And anyone else that's with you? Whereas, September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Alonzo L. Jones, Mayor of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week. And the City of Danville asks our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution, had in 1787, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, given under my hand this 18th day of September 2018.
I'd just like to say that on behalf of the Dorothea Henry Chapter, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, we thank you very much.
Councilman Shanks. Sure, sure.
Okay, I think it's very fitting that Ms. Guyer received this recognition for this magnificent document, a major document, the Constitution. It's also, I think, very fitting in the sense that Ms. Guyer did work for the former U.S. Senator, Chuck Ross, and she's a personal friend of Lyndon Baines Johnson's family, the President of the United States of America. Ms. Guyer, thank you so much, and thank you for keeping Danville on the international map.
Councilman Shanks.
So much.
Councilman Shanks.
And I just also wanted to say thank you. I carry with me a lot of the time the little Constitution that says from the Dorothea Henry Chapter of National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, and I've had it for several years, and I've worn it, nearly worn it out, but I appreciate the work that you've done and the many years that you've been here in front of city council representing this group.
Thank you.
And like the former mayor said, that Constitution is one amazing document with unbelievable foresight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I too.
Ms. Guyer?
Not done singing your praises yet. No, but thank you for being here, and Councilman Shanks already made great points about, as Councilman Saunders did, about the Constitution. But I know a lot of times we have young students who are here, and I don't think we have any tonight, but typically we do, and as Councilman Shanks said, you know, that pocket Constitution you could have, but also now they've even got it, you can do it as an app on your smartphone. So for young people watching on TV, maybe look up Constitution, you can keep it on your smartphone with you all the time. But thank you so much for all that you do, continue to do, and what you've done for this community for a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you again. Communications from the visitors, citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda items are presented. Madam Chair, if you can give the rules, please.
Communications to visitors is an opportunity for citizens to address counsel on matters not on the agenda. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and address. Each individual speaker shall have five uninterrupted minutes. A representative of a group may have up to 10 uninterrupted minutes to make a presentation. The representatives shall identify the group, and a group may have no more than one spokesperson.
Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. State your name and your address for the record, and we welcome you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cynthia Terry. My address is 202 North Union Street. That is our church address. I am the pastor there. I've been pastoring there for the last nine years. My interest, one of my heartbeats is outreach in the community. We've been doing a lot of community work. One of my concerns is the education for our youth, the at-risk youth, and also underprivileged families. We sponsor the summer feeding program in Doyle Thomas Park every year, No Child Left Behind, where we feed the children during the summer months when they're out of school to make sure they have a meal. So the Hillen Center is the ones that's sponsoring that. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and I want to get more involved with the city in helping our community. Thank you.
Ms. Terry wants to say, Vice Mayor and I talk about partnerships all the time. Thank you so much for partnering with us. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you again. Anyone else would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, may come forward at this time? Anyone else? We move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, have previously been discussed by city council, and are introduced for first reading. Emotionally, Vice, emotionally consent agenda? Open to public hearing. Open to public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on any item on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda may come up at this time. I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Saunders.
And Mr. Mayor, move approval for sending in items B through F.
Second by Councilman Whittle. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
On the new business consideration of vacating a right-of-way near Cherry Street, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shanks.
Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance taken approximately 2,230 square feet of the public right-of-way on Cherry Street.
Is there a second? Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye. Item B, I yield to the Vice Mayor.
Yes, item B is a consideration of transferring city-owned surplus properties to the DRHA. Now open to public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution, approve a resolution declaring certain city-owned properties to the surplus to the needs of the city and authorizing the city manager to convey such property to the Danville Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Have a motion by Mr. Buckner, second by Councilman Saunders. Anyone wish to speak? Any comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Abstain.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Item C, consideration of entering into a purchase power agreement with the Turning Point Energy for the Whitmore Solar Project. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shanks.
Mayor, I move for adoption of a resolution authorizing and approving the city of Danville, Virginia to enter into a power purchase agreement, sorry, a purchase power agreement with Turning Point Energy for the Whitmore Solar Project for 10 megawatts of renewable solar peaking generation power to be constructed at 7480 Irish Road within the Danville Utilities Service territory.
Second by Councilman Miller, discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Item D, consideration of entering into a purchase power agreement with Strata Solar for the Ringgold Solar Projects. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the city of Danville, Virginia to enter into a purchase power agreement with Strata Solar for the Ringgold Solar Project for 12 megawatts of renewable solar peaking generation power to be constructed at 1493 Ringgold Road within the Danville Utilities Service Territory.
Second by Councilman Shanks, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Item E, consideration and entering into a shared usage agreement with PAX Incorporated for the Stonewall Recreation Center. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Danville, Virginia and PAX Incorporated.
Second by Councilman Miller, is there discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Item F, consideration of amending Chapter 24, parades and other assemblies of the Danville City Code. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Dr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wish us to approve an ordinance repealing and reordaining Chapter 24 entitled "Parades and Other Assemblies of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended, more specifically Article 1 entitled "In General," Section 24-1 entitled "Permit for Assemblies, Demonstrations, etc. on City Property."
Second by Councilman Saunders, discussion of the motion? Counselman Shanks.
I have one question, and I just wanted to clarify. Is this meeting here an assembly or is it something else in the city code?
This would not be an assembly under the city code.
This meeting is covered under some other section?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mike?
Discussion of the motion, Councilman Saunders.
Second, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to commend the city manager, his staff, and our chief for the forward thinking. I think this document is good to keep our city safe, and I just appreciate very much them being on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion? Dr. Miller.
Well, I think it is too. I think it's the police chief and other city officials have done an outstanding job. You know, one thing that particularly impressed me is if you wanted to have a meeting, you only had to give 12 hours' notice, and really sometimes there's not, you need more than 12 hours for the city to prepare for certain meetings and assemblies, and this gives them, I think, three days, yeah, three days, in case there is some controversial meeting or something to prepare for it and make the city safe. So this is really an outstanding change.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Item G, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance for Virginia DMV Occupant Protection Grant Program Funds. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Saunders.
Move the Dr. Ordinance amending fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue, the Department of Motor Vehicle Highway Safety Office Selective Enforcement Occupation Protection Grant Program in the amount of eight, in the amount of $5,250 and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Item H, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance for Virginia DMV Highway Safety Speed Grant Program. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Office Selective Enforcement Speed Grant Program in the amount of $9,100 and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion? Item I, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance for Virginia DMV Highway Safety Alcohol Grant Program Funds. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenues from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Selective Enforcement Alcohol Grant Program in the amount of $19,285 and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Saunders, discussion of the motion? Item J, consideration of approving a moral obligation with American National Bank. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Campbell.
This man moves for adopting a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of moral obligation agreement between the City of Danville and American National Bank Trust Company.
Is there a second? Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer.
Item K, consideration of amending Chapter 37 of the Danville City Code to add a new section entitled "Data Centers and Data Center Tax Rate." Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 37 entitled "Taxation," Article 2, entitled "Levy and Rate of Tax on Real Estate, Tangible Personal Property, etc. of the Code of the City of Danville, 1986, as amended, to add a new section, 37-37, entitled "Data Centers and Data Center Tax Rate." First reading.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion? Item L, a resolution declaring a local emergency. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we declare Danville as a state of emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Tomer. Vice Mayor Vogler.
Aye.
Communication, city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, while a few were affected by the hurricane and the flooding in the city of Danville, we were fortunate to avoid much of the most damaging parts of the hurricane. I do want to thank the many city employees and the agencies who have been working with us for the past week or so to make sure that we were as prepared as possible for whatever the outcome may have been. I could tell you that from my observation, we are well-served by a dedicated group of men and women in multiple agencies and city departments. We had multiple emergency planning meetings throughout the last two weeks with representatives from over a dozen groups, ready to help anyone in need. I would like to thank them all for their service, and I just want to say how much I appreciate everyone's effort and involvement.[1676.56] Uh, it's, uh, we're, you know, since we, this was not as bad as we first expected early last week, it served as great practice for us in real time. Um, so I believe that when the time comes, hopefully it never will, that we'll be ready to help serve our, our public. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, city managers. City attorney?
Uh, nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, just take a moment to, uh, remind everybody to pray for the people who have lost loved ones, who lost everything they had during this hurricane and then Richmond got hit pretty bad yesterday with some tornadoes. Um, you know, the, all of us were in one way or another affected by this. Uh, you know, either you know someone or you, you know, you, you personally lost something in there. Um, also I'd like to, uh, you know, to just thank everybody who came to town. There were lots of folks that came to town to escape the storm this past week. Uh, some guys on Westover took in several refugees from, uh, down on the coast. Mr. Badgett, Mr. Tommy Badgett, uh, took in quite a few folks there, uh, at last-minute notice. So it was a really nice thing of him to do, so that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, I was, I just wanted to tell what the city manager said about the city workers coming together, the efficiency and preparation. We were blessed that we did not get the major part of Florence hurricane and also the country was blessed that it, it weakened, that it not affected as bad as we thought it would be. Secondly, I just want to commend our city manager for the transparency and working with council and letting us know what's going on. We don't take it for lightly. Just wanted to say thank you for your service, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Jones?
I, I have to do though what was stated. I had the opportunity as the mayor and I, I guess I'll call it the command center, to sit in the command center at the fire department with, as the city manager stated, with all of the agencies and our city workers there. And I sit in the back to stay out of their way and to see how everyone was informed and being informed from everything in regards to our city, uh, persons in our city who opening up Van Street for shelters and Bonner for shelters, just to sit in those meetings and to see everyone cooperating. The city of Danville is just amazing and I was just wondering if our citizens could see all of the work that was going into preparation for Florence and our city is in great hands and city managers want to thank you for your leadership because to sit in the back of that room and to continue to get those messages from Arnold and Mark and, and these are one-man teams. Um, Arnold works alone, our PIO officer, and Mark works alone, who you're able to view this today, but so many of our city workers and, and as the city manager stated, also those partners, uh, those agencies that were partnering with us. And so I just want, I just can't thank you enough to being able to be a part of that and this, so our citizens were in really, really good shape. And I just want to say this, a lot of times he's sitting here now, Jason is sitting here now and people, we get a lot of calls about power outages, but Jason just wanted to send a kudos to you and your staff because this is one time that you want to give you, give you your dues. I don't know how many people called you and said, "Thank you for the power being on," but I just want to say personally, thank you all and everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, quick question of the attorney. Now, our next meeting October seventh, isn't that, uh, second, isn't that delayed to the fourth?
That's the one you voted on, the last meeting, two to the fourth?
Yeah, that would be, that will be, that's correct. That'll be on Thursday, the.
Fourth. Okay. Uh, yeah, a, a great job by the city getting ready for this. I, I, a football team sometimes needs to have a full-dress scrimmage. Uh, we thought it was going to be a real game. Uh, it was serious enough. Uh, the, the city workers, you know, they're pumping water off River Street. They were closing all the dangerous areas on the trail. So, uh, you know, next time we might not be so lucky. So we've had a full-scale dress rehearsal and I think you all have done an outstanding job. Uh, Keysera today, uh, one of the first mini high-tech industries that's coming to Danville. Uh, many of us were there today for the ribbon cutting and it was really impressive place and, uh, first-class place and really world, world-class place, uh, factory to come to here. I am having some concerns over our situation with the dog warden. Uh, the, uh, you know, we passed a leash law recently, but it's going to do us no good if we don't have somebody to enforce it. And I know we're, we're seeking more dog wardens. I'm afraid we might be losing one we got, so we need to make sure because it's like living in, out in the country. I mean, there's, every morning I see eight or ten deer in our neighborhood, raccoons, foxes, sometimes bear, you know, and they, the place is ubiquitous with dogs. We need two or three wardens to patrol this city. Um, so I am concerned about that. And finally, th- this was just heartrending for me to see. New Bern is one of my favorite cities outside of Danville. Uh, for three years in a run, in a row, I went down for the MS ride, a hundred, a hundred and fifty mile bicycle ride, raised money for MS and, uh, you know, to see that city just, uh, you know, devastated, uh, you know, my wife and I went down there for our anniversary last year. Uh, we walked along the river trail, it's now underwater. The park where the two thousand bike riders gathered to take off and come, and come back to was, was washed away. Uh, uh, these are very nice, friendly people and it's just tragic this happened to them. Uh, so our hearts go out to them. The Colonial Mansion, uh, Tyrant Palace, uh, you know, the gardens, uh, I just don't know what to say. It's just devastating. And then Richmond, this hit home, close to home too, because I lived on Hull Street and that's where the tornadoes hit, uh, uh, in Middle Oathian and that area, Swift Creek Reservoir. These are all familiar names with me and there actually were fatalities there as well. So our hearts go out to all these people in, in the storm. We were lucky, others were not lucky. So our prayers be with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, heads up, my last comment, I'll ask you to comment on the sandbags. Thoughts and prayers go out to the families in North Carolina, South Carolina, uh, Richmond and other places as well. We know things were tough and we certainly are continuing to pray for them. Also, Mr. Manager, special thanks to our fire department and police department, uh, today in front of my house, direct in front of my house, over the fire, the house on fire. And the men and women, they came out and I am so glad they were close by, but they really responded very quickly, did a very professional job and it calmed the neighborhood down. Everybody came outside, what's going on, just that and the other. They had it under control. So special thanks to them, fire and, uh, police department. Also, it was a great day today. Uh, our mayor did an excellent job welcoming Keysera to Danville across from the institute. It's about thirty-five jobs initially and they're high-paying jobs. I understand the job can start about sixty thousand dollars a year in that range and also the company has plan of doubling that facility. So jobs are here and more are coming. Also, I want to say a special thanks to about forty young people there, high school students and DCC college students as well. That was good to say, good to see because they are the future workforce for our area. So we really appreciate Keysera coming to Danville and more jobs are on, uh, on, on the way. Want to thank, uh, the city as well, Mr. Manager and your staff, Mark, Ken, Mark and, and others. Uh, yeah, keeping us informed. I know a lot of people don't have the computers and don't have the iPhones, et cetera, but information was out there about the rain, about the possible flooding, about safety measure, uh, social services were prepared for a shelter. So we really appreciate Arnold and Mark and, and others keeping us informed about this event. And finally, uh, Mr. Mayor, question to the city manager, I think you may have started something. Uh, I've been here pretty much all of my life and I've never known the city to put out sandbags and sand and for these kind of situations. I think it was a great idea. People were certainly, um, using that service, so what can we expect in the future?
Well, um, you're right, we hadn't done the sand before. Uh, it was, uh, we made the decision to go ahead and get sand out where people could get, collect it and put it in sandbags if they had bags, uh, early last week when it looked like we were going to get the worst of the storm. Uh, we were, we were figured we'd have a lot of flooding and, uh, we thought that might be a good service, uh, to our citizens, um, just because of the magnitude of what we were facing at the time. Thankfully, it, it didn't come the way we thought it would, uh, and then a local business, uh, stockpiled a few, uh, sandbags, uh, several thousand sandbags and that was available to the public at a fairly cheap rate, um, so that was good. And so we backed off on giving away our free bags while they sold bags, uh, but, uh, you know, we, uh, you know, we're glad to help our citizens when we can. It's, uh, um, you know, we probably won't be, be able to do sandbags for this pop-up thunderstorm events or flash floods that occur for that, but if we know well in advance that something's coming, then we can make plans ahead of time and hopefully help our citizens to protect their property as much as possible. So, thank you. And I appreciate our, you know, a couple of council members actually asked the question that we threw it out to our, our staff and the staff responded by, uh, making this happen. So, thank you.
Okay. Also, Mr. Crane, please thank your paper for getting the word out and keeping people informed as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanks?
Yeah, I just had a couple items. I too was at the ribbon cutting today for Keysera and as has been mentioned by several people, that's a very exciting opening that, uh, brings some high-paying jobs, but also promises of other businesses in the related field locating in Danville and that was real exciting. It's a beautiful building and it, uh, it went up, very, relatively speaking, very quickly. I, I, it's a beautiful sight. Um, also wanted to say thanks also to the city employees. They're even out, many are even out tonight, uh, still working on emergency duty. So, um, fortunately we dodged a bullet this time, but everybody showed up and was ready to go if they had to be and they still are. The, uh, someone or a couple of people mentioned refugees. I had the good fortune of having refugees in town, uh, during this storm.